Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Teresa Tomlinson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District One. Glenn Davis, District Two. Bruce Huff, District Three. Evelyn Turner-Pew, Mayor Pro Tem and District Four. Mike Baker, District Five. Gary Allen, District Six. Mimi Woodson, District Seven. Walker Garrett, District Eight. Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor. John House, Post Ten at Large Counselor. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Everyone, and welcome to the September 5th meeting of the Columbus City Council. Tonight is a resolution and proclamation session. This is the time that we come together to meet to celebrate you all. And for those who are watching on TV or live streaming, our chambers are absolutely full with folks who are doing incredible things in this community, in this River Valley region, and throughout southwest Georgia. And so you're going to get to hear some remarkable things. But before we get into the accolades and commendations, we want to start off as we do every time we come together. We want to welcome Pastor Don German, who's with the Inter Denomination of Faith Church of the Living God. Reverend German, hello, welcome. So good to see you.
Good to be here. Let us all pray. Oh Lord, our Lord, how excellent is your name in all the earth. Heavenly Father, we acknowledge you this day as the all-powerful, all-knowing, ever-present, sovereign king. Thank you for this opportunity for our mayor and the city council to take care of the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, just like you who have promised and given us everything that pertains to life and godliness. We ask your continued blessings upon this body to lead as you guide and direct them. Thank you, Lord, for all the groups that will be receiving proclamations on tonight. Help each group to carry out their mission. And I ask that you open their eyes so that they may hear your voice, their minds so that they may receive your eternal wisdom, open their spirits that they may know your leading and guidance, and open their hearts so that they may receive your wonderful love. Help us all to realize that we are in this together, and by your divine guidance, we will make it together. Thank you again, dear God, for this opportunity to bless you as this city council serves the people as well as these groups of Columbus, Georgia. Thank you, dear God, for who you are, and it is in your holy and matchless name that I pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pastor German, thank you so very much for coming today and providing that blessing. And we wanted to ask you, where is your church located?
It is located at 3127 Tower Road, Building B. And our services start at nine o'clock for Sunday School, and then 10:15 for our worship service.
Well, thank you for all you and your congregation do for this community. Thank you very much. All right, and as you all know, we have an outstanding high school behind us, or does it go down to middle school? I'm going to let you... It goes to middle school and high school. We're going to let you fill us in a little bit, but we've got Rainy McCullers School here. We have their government association. We're going to call them forward to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you all would come, please. And as they assemble, if you all would stand and prepare for them to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Let's give them a round of applause. The round of applause is customary because usually it's kindergartners and first graders and so... But you all, this is old hat to y'all. But do introduce yourselves and give us your age, your grade, any other information you'd like for us to know if you hold an office with the government association.
Hi, I'm William Bithay. I'm in the 10th grade, and I am the communications chair for Rainy McCullers School of the Arts. My major at Rainy McCullers is vocal music.
Hi, my name is Chandler Brundage. I am the vice president of Rainy McCullers School of the Arts, and my major is visual arts.
Hello, my name is Tyree Anderson. I am in 10th grade. I am a high school homeroom representative for Rainy McCullers School of the Arts, and my major is theater.
Hello, my name is Jayla Smith. I am a student at Rainy McCullers, and I am in the 10th grade, and my major is theater.
Wonderful. Well, if you all, the citizens out there, haven't had an opportunity to go to Rainy McCullers to see the quality of the facility and the amazing thing the students are doing, you need to take a little bit of a field trip. So yes, ma'am, please introduce yourselves and tell us yourself and tell us a little bit about Rainy McCullers.
Yes, my name is LaJoy Sanders, and I'm a science educator at Rainy McCullers. I'm also an SGA sponsor. This is my 20th year with the district, and so being at Rainy McCullers has been a huge blessing. There's a tremendous amount of talent that we see across the middle school and the high school level of students. And you're going to start seeing that in the near future in some of the performances if you haven't already. We are under the leadership of Dr. Brian Williams, and we look forward to a wonderful, wonderful school year. We look forward to great exploits from these young people.
Well, thank you, and we wish you all the best in this new year, so good luck to you. Let's give them another round of applause. All right, we're going to get down to the business of proclimating and resoluting. And first up, we've got Pacelli High School Day. So we want to call forward Rony Collins of St. Anne Pacelli Catholic School, president and high school principal. Hello, hello, please. Yes, and we've got Counselor Walker Garrett would like to read this first proclamation. Yes, sir.
Thank you. It's a real pleasure for me to read this proclamation because I am a graduate of the school. I actually started St. Anne in third grade and went all the way through 12th grade, so I'm a Go Vikings.
Go Vikings!
And also, I will give my alma mater some free publicity. They are in the middle of their capital campaign, and they're doing really well, and they've raised five of the seven million, which is their goal. So I'm really proud of them for that. This proclamation recognizes her 60th anniversary and very glad to have the school and the community and to have been an alumni. Whereas on September 2nd, 1958, Holy Family High School was established in Columbus, Georgia to fill the void in local Catholic education facilities. And whereas the name of the school was changed to Pacelli High School, to honor the October 1958 death of the late Holy Father Pope Pius XII, Eugenio Pacelli. And whereas in late summer 2008, plans were finalized to combine St. Anne School with Pacelli High School to create one school named St. Anne Pacelli Catholic School. This plan would combine the administration and faculty to benefit the school both academically and financially. And whereas St. Anne Pacelli Catholic School serves as Columbus's only Catholic school, St. Anne Pacelli is the only Catholic school with preschool through 12th grade grades and college preparatory, serving the southwestern portion of our state. And whereas St. Anne Pacelli Catholic School, through Catholic formation and academic excellence, is committed to the spiritual, intellectual, and physical development of the students entrusted to our care. And whereas September 2018 marks the 60th anniversary of Pacelli High School, and whereas the mayor and council join in celebrating and extending our best wishes to Pacelli High School for many more happy, productive years of services to our community, now therefore Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Sunday, September 2nd, 2018, as Pacelli High School Day.
Congratulations. What a treasure Pacelli is to this community. Please say a few words. I know you've got some folks in the audience, too.
Yes, and it's a great day to be a Viking, and so we are so happy to be here. I, too, am a graduate of Pacelli High School. So I think I graduated just right before Garrett did, but we were super close together. But as you can see, Garrett is a wonderful example of the absolutely positively amazing students and families that are a part of our school. So it's a huge blessing for us to celebrate the 60 years together, and we want to thank you, and we want to thank you for what you do, all of you, for our city, and we depend on you, and we would love for you to come by and see us at any time. So we appreciate this honor as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Come around and let us congratulate you and get you this proclamation. How many students did you say you have to?
Um, 721.
All right, over 721 students, you said? Yeah, fantastic, from this region. Well, great, and it's so impressive to see those young people, too. So again, yet another school our citizens need to stop by and see what's going on. Next, we have Help the Hooch Day. We want to call forward Ava Dixon, Henry Jackson, William Kent, Gloria Weston Smart, and too many others to name. They've got a whole crew here. Y'all come forward. I was teasing them when we were having greetings before the meeting started. I said, "How many gazillions of tons of trash are you going to pull from the Chattahoochee?" It's always stunning to hear what they do every year, so, yeah. And we're going to have Counselor Mike Baker read this proclamation. If you would hit your button there.
There we go. Thank you for coming. And Gloria, thank you for the work that you and your team do every year. It's always fun to follow that and be part of it, and it's a great thing for the city that all of you do, and brings in a tremendous amount of volunteers. I'll read the proclamation, and then maybe you can just make a few comments about the Help the Hooch. So it's my pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas the Chattahoochee River is crucial to the history and the development of the Middle Chattahoochee. And whereas the Chattahoochee River supplies 100% of the daily water used by citizens of the Middle Chattahoochee communities. And whereas the Chattahoochee River is one of our most valuable resources. And whereas pollutants originating from our homes, neighborhoods, parking lots, cars, and construction sites are carried to the Chattahoochee River by stormwater runoff. And whereas a few examples of non-point pollution source include pet waste, sediment, used motor oil, garden chemicals, paint products, fast-food containers, and cigarette butts. And whereas these pollutants flow through the storm drain system throughout the Middle Chattahoochee communities and entbe directly into the Chattahoochee River and her tributaries, where they harm wildlife and fisheries, ruin recreation areas, and threaten the purity of the river. And whereas to protect and preserve this most valuable water resource, the Middle Chattahoochee Help the Hooch Committee will conduct the 24th Annual Help the Hooch River Cleanup on October 12th and 13th, 2018. And whereas non-point pollution is a product of human abuse and neglect, the Help the Hooch Committee is extending an invitation to every citizen of the Middle Chattahoochee communities to participate in this cleanup process. And whereas the Middle Chattahoochee Help the Hooch Committee will conduct the 9th Annual Golf Tournament on September 7th, 2018, at Follow Me Golf Course Fort Benning, Georgia, to support the Help the Hooch Cleanup Activities and Watershed Festival. Now therefore Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Friday, September 7th, 2018, as Help the Hooch Day. Thank you. You're welcome.
Tell us a little bit about the effort.
Thank you. My name is Henry Jackson. I'm the executive director at Chattahoochee River Conservancy here in Columbus and proud to be the co-chair with Ms. Ava Dixon of Help the Hooch this year. It's a massive effort. I've been lucky to be a volunteer and then on the committee, and then now the co-chair throughout my time in Columbus. And it blows me away every year to watch this community come out and force and really embrace the very vital natural resource that is the Chattahoochee River. So we want to thank the council and the community for all of their support in this effort.
Well, at least introduce yourself so we know which name belongs with which face.
I am Ava Dixon, and I am co-chair of Help the Hooch, and I'm also with Keep Columbus Beautiful.
Oh, fantastic, great, yes. Next, yes.
Hi, John Brent, still retired, still hugging trees, and still working on important environmental projects. Last year, reported that we were trying to expand it to Harris County, and I'm happy to report to the group here that we had over 1,500 students and teachers involved with the cleanup last year. And given the reports that I have this year, I think we could exceed the 2,000. Add it to the 10,000 that we have in the community here, I think it's a fantastic opportunity to educate our youth and some of our older youth about some of the requirements we have with taking care of our water for today and for tomorrow. And thank you again for all your support you do and for Columbus. Keep Columbus Beautiful.
Yeah, great.
Hi, I'm Sharita Flewellen, and I am representing Part Four Incorporated, and I'm a manager at the Speakeasy Restaurant.
All right, thank you.
Hey, I'm Melissa Cardinal. I'm representing Fort Benning Environmental. My job is to take care of our Nepti's construction program under the Clean Water Act.
My name is Rich Schminer. I'm with Fort Benning Environmental, and my job is to direct the MS4 program at Fort Benning.
Hello, I'm Teresa Snellin with Columbus Parking Recreation Department.
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. We appreciate this opportunity to come before you all, and we look forward to coming. I am so excited about these young youthful leaders that are taking on this effort this year, so we can't do it by ourselves. Individually, we are responsible, and collectively, we are responsible to help keep Columbus beautiful and to protect that river that is our lifeline of our community. So thank you all for this opportunity.
It's amazing the difference, you all. I mean, the bald eagles are back. It's just amazing. So thank you. It takes a lot of folks, a lot of different people doing a lot of different things. You all have made a huge difference. Thank you so much. Let's congratulate them again. You all come around and let us get you this proclamation. Congratulations, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for what you do. Ava, thank you for volunteering. Thank you for all you do. Okay, here you go. Thank you. Great speech. All right, next we have Star Spangled Banner Day. We want to invite Lynn Allen Tate and Gloria Johnson forward, please. And if you have a group, they can come on forward, too, however you all want to do it. But we're going to turn it over to Counselor John House for his proclamation. Counselor House, if you'd hit that, great, thank you.
Thank you. I mean, it truly is a privilege and an honor to be allowed to read this proclamation. This past Father's Day, I had the opportunity to go to Fort McHenry with two of my daughters and my wife, and we assisted a number of Korean War veterans in raising a replica of the Star Spangled Banner while a park ranger sang the Star Spangled Banner.
Wow, wonderful.
So it was a moving moment, so this is truly special for me. Whereas the Star Spangled Banner, our national anthem, was written during the War of 1812. And whereas by the dawn's early light on September 14th, 1814, Francis Scott Key saw the American flag flying over Fort McHenry, signifying an American victory, and was inspired to write the words of the Star Spangled Banner. And whereas the Star Spangled Banner became our national anthem on March 3rd, 1931, when President Herbert Hoover signed Public Law 823. And whereas millions of Americans cherish and respect the words in music of the Star Spangled Banner. And whereas sporting and public events begin with the singing or playing of the national anthem as a reaffirmation of patriotism and love of country. And whereas the National Society, United States Daughters of 1812, and the Benjamin Hardin Chapter calls for a day to observe the historical significance of the Star Spangled Banner and to celebrate the words that Francis Scott Key penned in 1814. Now therefore Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Friday, September 14th, 2018, as Star Spangled Banner Day.
Thank you. Please say a few words.
Well, we appreciate the recognition and especially your adventure up there. I got this close one time, but I've never been, so it would be an amazing, emotional, patriotic event. And we thank you for allowing us to celebrate this in Columbus. I'm sorry Ms. Tate didn't get here tonight, but we have another Ms. Johnson here, Frances Johnson, who is a member of our chapter, and to help represent us. Thank you very much.
Great, and do introduce yourself for everybody watching.
I'm Gloria Johnson.
All right.
And I'm a member of the Benjamin Hardin Chapter of War of 1812.
Fantastic. Well, thank you all for what you do. Please do come around and let us shake your hand. Let's give them another round of applause. There you go, yes. It's so good to see you. Yes, that's right, we'll have to do that. All right, and staying with our patriotic theme, we've got Constitution Week. And so we want to call forward the George Walton Chapter of the NS DAR, the Oglethorpe Chapter, the Kaweta Falls Chapter, and the Lucy Spell Rayford Chapter. Got a crowd. All right, wonderful. And we're going to have Counselor House is going to read this as well. There you go.
Again, thank you for the opportunity. As a member of the Kaweta Falls Chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution, this also was special for me. Whereas September 17th, 2018, marks the 231st anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. And whereas in Columbus, Georgia, citizens are asked to acknowledge the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787, and to join the Kaweta Falls Chapter, National Society, Sons of the American Revolution, Oglethorpe Chapter, National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, George Walton Chapter, National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, and the Lucy Spell Rayford Society, Children of the American Revolution, in celebration of Constitution Week. Now therefore Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim September 17th to the 23rd, 2018, as Constitution Week.
All right. Please come forward, introduce yourselves, and if you'd like to tell us a little bit about your efforts, please do.
I'm Gay Solomon, and this is Mary and Ann. We're with the Oglethorpe Daughters of the American Revolution, and we're just excited to have the support that y'all are giving us, and we're excited to tell people about patriotic things.
And thank you so much for all your educational efforts, too. You all work throughout the community, providing educational...
We have three missions, education, patriotism, and historic preservation. We are the largest, the world's largest, women-only service organization.
Wow, all right, great, great. And you've got a whole crowd of folks here. Would you all like to introduce yourselves as well?
Well, I'm Gloria Johnson, and I'm here representing the George Walton Chapter of DAR. I'm the present regent of that chapter.
I'm Frances Johnson, and I am with the George Walton Chapter, and I am the registrar.
Okay.
Hello, Lorraine.
I'm Lorraine Stewart, and I'm a member of the George Walton Chapter for about 11 years. And it's a very active chapter, and we're proud of all our members.
I'm Malone Moore, and I'm the corresponding secretary for George Walton Chapter DAR, and also work with the Children Lucy Spell Rayford Society.
All right.
I'm Dan Ginter, Vice President of the Kaweta Falls Chapter, and I also go to fourth grade in the school district here, and I do what we call the traveling trunk. I dress in a uniform and talk to them about the standards of the fourth grade in the American Revolution, and I have a whole display of items that I talk about.
Oh, fine. Oh, great.
My name is Arthur Eugene Hall. I'm the senior society president for Lucy Spell Rayford Society, and I'm a member of the Kaweta Falls Chapter, SL.
I'm Wilson Ford. I'm the society president of the Lucy Spell Rayford Society.
Fantastic, and do we have one more? Yes.
And Lucy Spell Rayford Society.
And Lucy Spell Rayford Society. And I'm Christina Owens, and I'm also with George Walton DAR Chapter.
Fantastic. Well, thank you all so much for all you do. Please come around, let us congratulate you and get you this proclamation. Let's give them another round of applause. Let me make sure I'm giving you the right one here. I got it. So many proclamations. If you see one in here that doesn't belong to you, let me know. Thank you so much, all right. Thank you all, yes. Thank you so much. You bet. Thank you all for coming. So congratulations. Thank you for all your work, and thank you for all you do for education. That's wonderful, thank you. Melissa, thank you. So good to see you. Yeah, that was, that was a great job, all right. Congratulations, and thank you, appreciate you. All right, next we have, we have a lot of people that need to be recognized. It's been in the news for some months now, and certainly over the last few days, about the major leak we had, about 30,000 more gallons of water came crashing down from the 12th floor of the Government Center. Made it all the way down, I believe, to the fourth floor in some fashion, but pretty much devastated our first couple of floors. And as you can imagine, a lot of people had to respond to that. Happened at 2:00 AM on a Sunday morning. A lot of folks were snug in bed while a lot of other people were bailing water and trying to provide emergency relief. And so we thought it fitting to recognize them. We're going to call forward here, I want to do it by category, and we're going to have Counselor Allen read this, but we want to call forward representatives from the Sheriff's Office first, please. Is that right? Do I do it, yes, Sheriff's Office, come on forward.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my privilege to publish the proclamation recognizing those professional employees who respond and keep us all safe. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the services provided by the Government Center to our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and employees of the Columbus Consolidated Government are its most valuable asset. And whereas it is important to recognize our employees for their various achievements, along with recognizing employees who deal with the unexpected circumstances with a sense of urgency and professionalism. And whereas on June 18th, 2018, the water main that feeds the boiler on top of the Government Center broke. And whereas water damaged the 11th floor through the 5th floor, mostly on the northern side of the building, causing offices to flood and rendering the building unusable until June 25th, 2018. And whereas the Sheriff's Office, Public Works, Information Technology Engineering, Inspections and Code, and Risk Management worked diligently to assist with the damage assessment to determine the full scope of cleanup required, as well as worked with the Mayor's Office and the City Manager's Office to keep the public and local media abreast with accurate and continuous updates. And whereas the following employees of the Sheriff's Office have shown immense dedication and work ethic during this critical time. Major Mike Massey, just raise your hands if you're in here. Major Mike Massey, Lieutenant Mike Daly, Captain Steve Sykes, Lieutenant Bill Jesse, Lieutenant Myron Strange, Lieutenant Robert Austin, Lieutenant Johnny Ellerby, Lieutenant Brad Hicks, Sergeant Ryan Toley, Corporal Lisa Williams, Corporal Larry Tippins, and Sheriff Donna Tompkins. The mayor and council of Columbus, Georgia, and all citizens of Columbus, Georgia, recognize and appreciate the contributions made to the public good by these outstanding employees. Now therefore our mayor Teresa Pike Tomlinson of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 4th, 2018, as CCG Teamwork Day.
All right. Well, Sheriff, you know, if you don't see it in action, you just have no idea. I mean, people know and they appreciate all that Sheriff's Office does, certainly, but you guys, Major Massey particularly, Sheriff, it's amazing. So thank you so much. Please say a few words.
I just want to say I have been so blessed and fortunate to have some of the greatest people that work for the Skog County Sheriff's Office. They just show up every day and do what they need to do, and I personally am, again, grateful that they're so awesome. So I appreciate them and celebrate them just like you do.
Anybody else want to say a few words?
I will. We appreciate the recognition.
I will. We appreciate the recognition, but the teamwork theme of this was demonstrated perfectly throughout this. Every department throughout the city just jumped right in and done what they had to do. Lieutenant Daley and Laura Jolly, they're still scheduling courts. They're juggling that schedule, and they work all through the weekends and on into the nights. And it wouldn't be possible without everybody pulling that kind of effort. So it was a pleasure to be part of this.
Yeah. It truly demonstrated what the phrase "public service" means. Thank you all so very much. Do come forward. We want to provide this to you, and shake your hand. Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you, Sheriff. I know you're getting those to the right folks. Thank you so much. Appreciate all your hard work. Thanks for all you do. Really appreciate you. Thank you so much for all you do. Brad, thank you. Look a sharp, man. Thank you, Major. Absolutely.
How do you want to do each group? Do we read it again?
I guess, um...
Just call them all at the same time?
Is it the same thing? I guess maybe, maybe.
Mayor, I guess we've got a few more to recognize, and would all the employees from the Public Works area, Superior Court, Information Technology, Engineering, Inspections and Code, Risk Management, come forward?
As they come forward, this is going to exhibit exactly what we were talking about by teamwork. All of these different departments. Let's get, Pat, if you get your group up front. You're first to be recognized. Yeah.
The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the services provided by the Government Center to our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the employees of the Columbus Consolidated Government are its most valuable asset, and whereas it is important to recognize our employees for their various achievements, along with recognizing employees who deal with unexpected circumstances with a sense of urgency and professionalism; whereas on June 18th, 2018, the water main that feeds the boiler on top of the Government Center broke down; whereas our water damaged, whereas water damaged the 11th floor through the 5th floor, mostly on the northern side of the building, causing offices to flood and rendering the building unusable until June 25th, 2018; and whereas the Sheriff's Office, Public Works, Information Technology, Engineering, and Inspections and Code worked diligently to assist with damage assessment and determine the full scope of cleanup required, as well as worked with the Mayor's Office and City Manager's Office to keep the public and local media abreast with accurate and continuous updates; and whereas the following employees of Public Works have shown immense dedication and work ethic during this critical time: Pat Beigler, raise your hand one so we can see you. Drell Short, Jerry Gowen, Shannon Johnson, Drew McCullas, Katina Davis, Steve Lovell, Chris Joy, Dalvin Tucker, and Johnny Harp. Mayor, at the same time, I would like to recognize Superior Court, representing Superior Court Laura J. Jolly, and representing the Information Technology area Kevin Aker, David Gunnerson. I apologize if I messed that up. Jeremy Miles, Drew Hopkins, Cheryl Tate, Bailey Shellhorse, Debbie Harrelson, Chris Hines, Steve Ward, Jackie Holland, Shane Walker, and Forrest Tully. And Mayor, in the Engineering Department, Donna Newman and Ryan Pruitt. And in the Inspections and Code Department, John Hutchison, Bobby Frulany, and Alan Brown. And in Risk Management, Anne Maria Meele and Eric Jackson.
Stand and give them a round of applause, folks. Each of you had your unique roles, so what I'd like to do is, Pat, why don't you say a few words about your group, your department, and what you were doing, and then we'll bring you all around and get the next group.
At the time of the event, the first call was to facilities, and both the people who work here and the management for facilities, they came in, immediately started contacting Servpro and doing the things necessary to minimize the damage, got the water shut off, and after that, then, we escorted, the staff here escorted people around, the contractors who've come in, the insurance company folks who've come in. All of those folks had to be escorted, and they were there to answer questions, point out particular problems, technical problems, and are still working on those issues.
Well, you guys have done such a tremendous job, and it's well beyond that, by the way. Pat's just giving you the highlights. They're the ones that are also helping patchwork some things so that we can get this work done. So let's have you all come around, and then we'll bring up the next group to say a few words. Let's give them another round of applause, folks.
Great job.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Thank you so much for what you do. Boy, we appreciate all you all do. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Really appreciate all you do.
Thanks for all you do.
Pat, will you make sure this gets to the right folks? Okay. Great, great. All right, and we want Superior Court Representative Laura Jolly to come forward. Laura, tell us just a little bit, the citizens that don't know the day-to-day, obviously how this has affected the courts, and what you all have been doing on top of your already onerous process of maintaining civil and criminal justice in this community.
I just want to say thank you all for this. Thank you for everybody else. It's been a team effort. None of it would be possible without all of us together.
Well, you're being too humble and too kind. I'll say this. Running the courts is a complicated thing on any day, but when you've got judges in different places now, holding different kinds of hearings, having to move around, not having dedicated courtrooms, Laura's the one who's scheduling all that. So thank you. Thank you all for your patience as we work through this. We are so grateful for your professionalism. So please come around. Let's give Laura a round of applause. Thank you. There you go. You bet. All right, and Information Technology. We've got Forrest Tully, and if you're with Information Technology now, step up. Don't be shy. I tell you, Forrest, one of the greatest sights was when we walked in there to the 5th floor and saw that the server was not flooded.
That's correct.
Yeah.
We were one of the fortunate groups or unfortunate that we actually had someone working that night also. But some of the things that we've done or had to do because of it is when everyone moved out of the 11th through the whatever floors they've moved out of, it's our responsibility to make sure they have connectivity. So we actually, at very short notice, were able to get the Carmike Building up and running on network in all the other locations. And then during the week that we were actually out, we actually assisted moving all the departments, and I think it was from about the 5th floor to the 11th floor to different locations throughout the city. Of course, my role in it was just to make sure that I stayed out of my team's way because they were a very good team, and Sheriff's Office and everyone else, and I know I'd leave out everybody, but everyone worked very closely with us, gave us the resources we need to be in and out of the building as necessary. And, but the team did it, and this is the team. Thank them.
Well, I hope this is giving everybody a little sense of all the moving parts, because when he says, "and sets up remotely the systems," in buildings we weren't in previously. So it's not like we had an infrastructure there and could just plug it in. We weren't there. So let's give our IT Department a round of applause, folks. And please you all come on in. Appreciate you guys. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Cheryl, thank you. I know you'll get these to all the right folks. Okay, next we have Engineering. So Donna and Ryan?
I will say Ryan is out with a brand-new baby.
Oh, fantastic.
So he's not here tonight, but he will be back next week, and he was on a conference call earlier today, so he's still intricately involved. The role that we played was we were there from the beginning, pretty much. Part of the assessment, we've been working closely with John and with Pat and with the others on any needs that they may have. We're part of the negotiation as far as insurance, claims, and settlements, and then we will ultimately be lead in putting it all back together when all that's settled. So we're there through the whole process.
Once again, those are just the high points.
Right.
So, yeah. Let's congratulate Donna and her team. Donna, thank you so much. All right, and we've got Code and Inspections. Inspections and Code.
I don't know. I've been kind of dealing with all different areas, kind of previously being an engineer, and it was fairly good to call certain contractors, certain people I knew that could kind of give me some expertise and let me know what was going on. We were able to go in there and assess the building, make sure any issues, we didn't have any electrical hazards, any mechanical hazards, any plumbing hazards. Both my, two of my plumbing inspectors that we have with the city with, you know, over 40 years of experience in plumbing, so ideally those are the people I wanted to get in and make sure, hey, when we had this leak, if we have it anywhere else or anything we may need to be aware of as we're going in. And they also helped me rustle up a few plumbers to at least go look at it and try to give us some ideas as to where do we need to go next. And kind of on the insurance side, I've been dealing with the claim just because of the previous claims the cities have with Fire Station 11 and the annex, and I've kind of, while I was in engineering, dealing with a lot of that. So it's just kind of, even though in my new role as inspection, it's just that familiarity with the other departments, and like I said, I've worked with them before, so it makes it a little easier to kind of get things done.
Very complex, and particularly now in the negotiations. John, thank you so very much for all you do. Y'all come around and let us shake your hand. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Hey, John, thank you. There you go. All right, Anne Marie and Eric, come on forward.
We're the ones left.
Yeah, right, right.
First thing I'd like to say is to echo Major Massey. This has been an outstanding effort of teamwork, and that's why I love CCG Teamwork Day, because everybody has had a very important role, and we are way further on in the process than you might expect with two major claims that we've been handling at one time. What Risk Management has done, I can't even talk grammatically anymore. I'm kind of the primary coordinator with travelers, and so I would say that the adjusters as a whole have been very amenable to work with. Eric and I have walked the floors several times in those early days, both with and without the contents adjusters, not the building adjusters, John handled that, but we have walked those sticky floors, and we have walked with them, seen what the devastation was, and we have done a lot of the work towards that. Facilities has been amazing in helping to get this done, and so has everybody. It's a wonderful sight to see.
Well, thank you so much for your part in this Teamwork Day. So come around. Let's give them another round of applause, and let's get you... Thank you, Anne Marie. Man, look at you. All grown up, man. All right, we want to call forward Chattahoochee Valley...
Madam Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry. Hold on just a second here. We've got the City Manager.
I'd like to just take this opportunity to say thank you to the entire team. They have worked hard. I can assure you of that. Couple of people out of my office who were not recognized because they work out of my office, and it's what's expected of them, but both the Deputy City Managers, Lisa Goodwin and Pam Hodge, and then Tia Sha Johnson. And I can tell you, as I've said here before, when I get the call, whether it's 2:30 AM or 5 o'clock AM, they have to get up, too. And so they work hard, but the team has been awesome, and I wanted to take this opportunity publicly to say to the entire team, thank you for what you have done and what you are continuing to do to see this through. And I can tell you that there's a lot of work going on. And I know that at the last council meeting, Councilor Allen asked that we come back with, and Councilor Judy Thomas and some of the others, for a work session, and Councilor Allen had kind of mentioned even a special call meeting for September 18th. But we are pulling together all of everything that we can have a meaningful sharing of information and discussion. And so we are working on actually the second Tuesday in October, which is October 9th, because we'd like an opportunity to bring in some people outside of our network to at least engage in conversation with them. But at this time, unless council members, that's not a good time. The second Tuesday in October, which is the 9 o'clock City Council meeting, we'd like to come back and spend some time talking about it, sharing information for the Mayor and Council and for the public. But thank you to the entire team for all of your hard work. We still have work to do, and we're going to get it done. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. City Manager. As you said, it's what is expected. So that's why you and your office and Deputy City Managers don't do it, but that doesn't mean it's not appreciated, because it's a tremendous professional level of administration we have. Sometimes we take it for granted, but I tell you, when you go to other cities, you don't see... There are great cities, too, out there, but you don't see this level of professionalism. So thank you very much for what you do. All right, we want to call forward those with Chattahoochee Valley Pride Day. Sean Carter, Nicole Classy, and Mickel or Michelle Dooley, and Counselor Mike Baker is going to read this proclamation.
I do. Come on up. Thank you for coming and being with us tonight. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation. It's whereas in the spring of 1998, the Chattahoochee Valley Pride Association, host of the annual Columbus LGBTQ Pride Festival, was formed, given the LGBTQ community of Columbus, Georgia, and the greater Chattahoochee Valley area a safe place to celebrate diversity and fellowship. This event honors how far the LGBTQ community of Columbus has advanced while acknowledging continuing challenges. And whereas the Chattahoochee Valley Pride Association has partnered with various organizations in Columbus and the greater Chattahoochee Valley area, including but not limited to Network Age, the Community Outreach Project, and 101 Angels, while also welcoming and including a diverse variety of both for-profit and not-for-profit booths at the annual Columbus LGBTQ Pride Festival. And whereas the Chattahoochee Valley Pride Association has hosted the annual Columbus LGBTQ Pride Festival since 1999, this event was instrumental in creating the first LGBTQ community center in the city of Columbus, and has drawn statewide attention by networking with Pride on the Plains, Auburn, Obalaka, Alabama, South Georgia Pride of Valdosta, Georgia, and Augusta Pride of Augusta, Georgia. And whereas the Chattahoochee Valley Pride Association's annual Columbus LGBTQ Pride Festival, along with the missions of diversity, inclusion, and understanding, has consistently presented an upbeat and family-friendly atmosphere with all-day entertainment showcasing some of the tri-state area's most sterling performers, while vendor booths provide information about the area's unique educational and spiritual options. And whereas the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, join with the Chattahoochee... And whereas the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, join with the Chattahoochee Valley Pride Association in celebrating the 20th Annual LGBTQ Pride Festival and the continuing strive toward inclusion, diversity, and mutual respect, while honoring the accomplishments that have been made together as a community. Now therefore, Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Saturday, September 29th, 2018, as Chattahoochee Valley Pride Day. Thank you. Too many Chattahoochee.
Introduce yourselves, if you would, please.
I have with me Nicole Classy, who is the new vice president. We have our spiritual advisor, Reverend Emily Bell. And this is the first year I am the CEO of this thing. My name is Sean Carter, but everybody in Columbus knows me as Candy O'Hara.
Well, thank you so much. We've come a long way, I tell you what, and we're so glad to have you here and so glad to recognize diversity and inclusion in this community. So thank you.
Thank you.
And come on around, we'd like to shake your hand and provide you with this proclamation. Let's give them another round of applause.
Congratulations on being CEO. Thank you so much.
All right, and next we have the Scarlet Fountain Day. We want to call forward Lisa Fountain and Mark Fountain. And Counselor Walker Garrett is going to read this proclamation. Good evening. All right. And I can pass those out if you want me to, so you can come back.
Lisa, I know this is a bittersweet day for you. You give everything to this organization, and you've turned something that was a tragedy into something that's been beautiful and helpful to people who have dealt with the tragedy you dealt with. And we appreciate you in this community. I know you want to grow your message, you want to grow your mission, so we appreciate everything you do. It's my pleasure to read the proclamation of the record. Whereas Scarlet's Closet is a Columbus-based nonprofit organization founded in September 2015 by Lisa Fountain in memory of her granddaughter, Scarlett, who at 21 months old died from a rare childhood cancer. And whereas Scarlet's Closet's primary purpose is to provide support to families whose children are hospitalized due to emergency situations. This is done through the provision of care bags containing personal care items. And Scarlet's Closet also provides baby blankets, staple food items, journals and pens, and laundry detergent, as well as financial assistance when possible. And whereas currently Scarlet's Closet is providing these items to the Pediatric Intensive Care Unit at Ecclestone Children's Hospital in Atlanta, the Rahm McDonald House, and the Pediatric Intensive Care Unit at Piedmont, Columbus Regional, and Columbus, Georgia. And whereas Scarlet's Closet is funded by individuals, corporations, and annual fundraising events, Scarlet's Closet is solely supported by a volunteer workforce. And whereas Scarlet's Closet has distributed over 2,200 care bags and over $16,000 in financial support, as well as provided staple food items and baby blankets to families. And whereas September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, where cancer is the number-one disease killer of children in America. And whereas every day, 46 children are diagnosed with cancer, and one in five will not survive. And whereas September is also the third anniversary of Scarlet's Closet. And whereas the mayor and Columbus, excuse me, and council of Columbus, Georgia appreciate the work, dedication, and hours provided by these diverse volunteers from the greater Columbus, Vincie area, and recognize the person, Scarlett Renee Fountain, in whose loving memory all efforts are made. Now therefore, Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Sunday, September 30th, 2018, as Scarlet Fountain Day.
Please, if you would, say a few words. Tell us about this special organization. I know you've got some folks out in the audience, too.
I will. I brought a picture of Scarlett, so you can see our girl. She was a very spirited and spicy little girl that, well, you know, part of being a baby. On April the 8th, 2011, we noticed that she was having some discomfort in her neck, and so we took her to our local ER. They did a CT scan, they discerned that she had a mass in her neck, and she was immediately medevac to Ecclestone. We were there, found the, at the news that we feared most, that it was cancer. Unfortunately, Emery could not even discern what type it was. So they sent us home, and we came back the following week. And at that time, they told us it was a very rare cancer called undifferentiated epithelioid sarcoma. You've probably never heard of it, and I hadn't either. And only 10 cases are diagnosed per year, none to date have any known survivors. And so because her condition had declined from the biopsy, we were admitted unexpectedly. And we had nothing but the clothes in our bag. You know, think about the things that you got out of your medicine cabinet today, or when you took a shower, you had shampoo and deodorant and all these personal care items. And of course, you can buy those in the gift store, but they're much more costly than what we buy when we go to our local Walmart or department store. And so I never forgot that feeling. Unfortunately, three and a half weeks later, after all efforts were made to save Scarlett at 21 months old, she passed away. And after that, I had just formed such a close bond with the head nurse there and stayed in contact with her. And I said, I just, I have a desire to be here. I have a desire to do something. And she said, well, you know, we need things like cards of encouragement written to families, and baby blankets, and just things like that, and journals, because we made notes of the doctor's instructions and questions that we had. Such a vital thing, but not everybody has that. And so on June 2011, I became that person, and just expected that that was all I would be doing. Well, one of my friends heard what I had been doing and wanted to help us, and I also shared with them that I just had this desire to do these care bags. It just was something that was burning in my heart. My husband had encouraged me to pursue doing that. And so one of the local gyms had a little workout for us, and we raised $700, and boxes and boxes of these items. And so I said, my goodness, I'll have to clean out a closet. And he said, well, that sounds like a good name for a charity. So I went home, and Scarlet's Closet actually birthed that day. I created a Facebook page and a logo. And so some of my ladies at church said, we want to help. So a few months later, we took 60 bags, and as Councilman Garrett read, we, actually, we made a delivery last week, so we can now say that we've done over 2,300 care bags. We had so much stuff to take that we had to rent a U-Haul to take it. So God has just blessed our ministry so much, and we also have started providing meal packs for families there. Not everybody can afford to buy food in the cafeteria there. I'm just honored to get to be the empty vessel that God uses to facilitate this ministry. And so tomorrow, I will stand as a representative for several other charities before the governor, who is also recognizing, there's about, I think, 11 or 12 of us, who have made efforts to help families who are going through childhood cancer, and I'm very honored to do that. I just finished writing a book. It should be out in about two weeks about Scarlet's Closet. It's called Courage in Red Wagons. And on September 29th, in beautiful Uptown Columbus, we will have the 5th Annual, what's called the WOD, which means Workout of the Day, for Scarlett. It's a very grueling CrossFit workout. I don't do it, but I'm honored. Y'all can tell that, can't you? But I'm so honored that I get to do that. But when it'll be in Uptown Columbus, it's grown. And so I just said that to say that it's just amazing how someone who lived just a short time has touched more people in her absence than most of us will ever do in a lifetime. And I'm just so thankful that Mark and I got to be her grandparents, and that we get to help other families who've been where we are. If you're interested in our charity, it's scarletscloset@scarletwith2t's.org. We do have a website. Every $20 donation buys a bag for a family, and we're just thankful that we get to do this. And a special thanks to Councilman Garrett, who is very dear to my heart. Thank you for encouraging me to do this and for helping me with this. God bless you all.
Well, thank you for turning a heartache into a blessing. As they come around, if you're with Scarlet's Closet, please stand up, so everybody else can see you. Thank you all for what you do. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, and next we have Gear Up Georgia Day. So we'll, Rendellette Williams, come forward, please. And Counselor House is going to read this proclamation. Bruce, can you turn that on? We've got a special guest in the house. Representative Carolyn Hughley joins us.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to read this proclamation. Whereas the gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs, or Gear Up, is a federally-funded competitive grant program designed to increase the number of low-income students who are prepared to enter and succeed in post-secondary education. And whereas Gear Up Georgia serves over 11,000 students and their families in grades 7 through 12 from underserved communities who might be the first person in their family to go to college. And whereas Gear Up Georgia includes interventions such as tutoring, mentoring, rigorous academic preparation, financial education, and college scholarships to improve access to higher education for low-income, minority, and disadvantaged first-generation students and their families. And whereas Gear Up Georgia is built around public-private partnerships enlisting the formidable resources of government, business, and community groups to support low-income students as they prepare to enter and succeed in college. And whereas Gear Up Georgia is a partnership of the Embark Fanning Institute, Georgia Alliance of Educational Agency Heads, Georgia Department of Education, Georgia Office of Student Achievement, Georgia Partnership for Excellence in Education, Georgia Student Finance Commission, the Orange Duffel Bag Initiative, the Scholarship Academy, the Technical College System of Georgia, and the University System of Georgia. And whereas Georgia is committed to providing a quality education for all students, helping them to achieve their highest potential. Now therefore, Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 4th, 2018, as Gear Up Georgia Day.
Rendellette, you are one busy woman.
That I am, Mayor Tomlinson. Yes, ma'am. Thank you all so very much for having us here this evening. I would like the opportunity to introduce some very important people standing behind me, who I can say always have my back, as far as the Gear Up Georgia program is concerned. To my immediate right, we have Mr. Keith Seifert. He is the MCSD Chief Academic Officer. He is also our Gear Up Georgia Principal Investigator, so he's my go-to person in the district. And then we have, of course, the lovely, oh, no, State Representative Carolyn Hughley, the better half of our city manager.
Here, here.
Yes, yes. She is a member of our local coordinating council. We also have one of our counselors from Spencer High School, Ms. Tasha Leaks. Another one of our counselors from Hardaway High School, Ms. Angela Fontaine. They are both a part of the Leadership Council as well, and active members in the schools. And we have Marinette Graham. She is a Gear Up student from Spencer High School. So I just want to thank them all for coming out. We're in our third year. This is a seven-year grant. And, oh, yeah, I can't forget my little one right here, Mr. Braxton, from Emmanuel Prep. But we are in our third year, as I was stating. We're now in the high schools. We have a little over 900 ninth graders that we're working with, and we're looking forward to working with them over the course of the next four years, concluding in 2022.
Rendellette, you guys are doing some amazing work, truly touching these kids' lives. Thank you so much for what you do. When we saw Representative Carolyn Hughley come in, not only is she one of the most esteemed members of the State House of Representatives, she's the wife of Isaiah Hughley, and he said, Carolyn's here, I don't know why. And I said, well, she's here to sing you happy birthday. Because his birthday was on Saturday. I think I scared him to death. So, but anyway, y'all come around and let us shake your hand. Good to see you all. Oh, thank you. Good to see you. Hello there. You can go on back and sing now if you want to. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. You bet. All right, and next we have National Suicide Prevention Month, and we want to call forward Donna Faircloth, the chairperson, and also Christina Owens, the Georgia Director. Hello, ladies. And we have Counselor Allen is going to read this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my privilege to publish the proclamation, which reads as follows. Whereas in the United States, nearly 45,000 people die by suicide each year, and whereas in Georgia, over 1,400 people die by suicide each year. Whereas suicide is the second-leading cause of death in Georgia among individuals between the ages of 25 and 34, and whereas suicide is the only leading cause of death in the United States that has increased every year for the past decade. And whereas over 90% of the people who die by suicide have a diagnosable and treatable mental health condition, although often that condition is not recognized or treated. And whereas organizations, such as the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, envision a world without suicide, and are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide through research, education, advocacy, and resources for those who have lost or struggle. Now therefore, our mayor, Teresa Pike Tomlinson of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim the month of September as Suicide Prevention Month.
Let's give them a round of applause for all their hard work. Please introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about your efforts.
Hi, I'm Donna Faircloth. This is my second year serving as the local chairperson for the Out of the Darkness Community Walk, which raises awareness and funds for suicide prevention. All of those funds, the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention uses within the community. Muskogee County Schools, as well as all of the public schools in the Georgia school system, receive their suicide prevention education material from the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. We have, for our walk, we have sponsors from within the business community, Fort Benning, several schools and churches, as well as people within the community serve as volunteers. Last year, we raised $20,000 here locally with close 400 people in attendance, and we hope to continue growing it each year.
Well, thank you for all you do. And for those out there who are listening, we do have a community hotline number, just 211, from your hard-line phone will connect you with referral services that are funded and provided by a united way. And so certainly, if you know someone, or you yourself are struggling with issues, thoughts of suicide, certainly call 211 from any Columbus, Georgia hard line. So thank you all for all you do. Please come around, let us get you this proclamation. Let's give them another round of applause, folks.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Want to take that? Thank you.
All right, and next, on the agenda, we have the Sickle Cell Disease Awareness Month. We want to call Lois Williams and Dr. Harold Mayweather forward, please. And Counselor Gary Allen is going to read this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my privilege to publish the proclamation, which reads as follows. Whereas sickle cell disease is an inherited blood disorder that affects red blood cells and for which there is currently no universal cure. And whereas, as September is back to school month for most children, the Sickle Cell Disease Association of America wants the public to reflect on the children and adults whose lives, education, and careers have been affected by this disease. And whereas, beginning in 1975, the association and its members and its member organizations began conducting month-long events to call attention to sickle cell disease and the need to address the problem at a national and local levels. Whereas in 1983, the US House of Representatives and President Ronald Reagan unanimously designated September as National Sickle Cell Anemia Awareness Month, in an effort to have Sickle Cell Month officially recognized at all levels. And whereas the Association for Sickle Cell in the lower Chattahoochee region will sponsor a walkathon and a parade on September 15th, 2018, to raise funds to benefit sickle cell patients and to increase local public awareness of the devastating effects of this disease.
All right, well, as you all can probably tell, we've had our sound system gone. We're experiencing some tough weather here, and it should pass. I was just looking at the, looking at the... I was just looking at the radar, so I think we're all right. It should pass here soon. But ma'am, why don't you go ahead and just introduce yourselves? That should be on. Is it on?
Yeah, I think so. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for having us here today. First, I'd just like to acknowledge that as Dr. Harold Mayweather could not make it here with us today, so in his absence, I do have two supporters that have come with me today, and they work with our association, both in our office and with our support group. I'll let them introduce themselves. You know, I want to...
Hi, Mayor. We are Jackie and Kenneth Lattimore, and we're board members with the Association of Sickle Cell.
I'd just like to say that Ms. Jackie is also, she is my office assistant, at this time, the only office assistant. So she sees to me what I need to get done. And her husband, a member of our support group, and he is always on the radar. And the two of them together, you will see them around the community performing many things, and you'll see them most at local health fairs, because that's our bread and butter to get out there in the community, to spread the word about sickle cell disease and to educate the public about this devastating effects of it. We are here once again this year. This will be our 23rd annual Sickle Cell Walk and Parade to raise awareness in Columbus about this devastating disease. We always have it on the third Saturday, third Saturday of September each year, and I hope that does not change. As a sidebar, you all know that Columbus is growing, a bustling community, and it is very, very busy. So we have a lot of things to contend with now on that third Saturday. We know that the Tri-Latino Festival is that day, Mayor. And also, I think last year, the Little League also had their opening day. I think they may be doing that again this year. But in any event, we will carry on, because our work is as important, and Columbus can handle those things. So I'd just like to say that sickle cell disease, also known for some as sickle cell anemia, is an inherited group of red blood cell disorders. And of this disease that's inherited, the sickle cell disease is one of the most noted diseases that is diagnosed or detected in newborn screening. And all children are screened for sickle cell disease in the trade when they're born. We have in that disease, because it is a blood disorder, sometimes it is linked with cancer, and in many centers throughout the nation, it is in with the different cancer centers where these children are treated. But mainly, people think of it as an African-American disease, but that's a myth. It might have originated on the continent of Africa, in that Mediterranean area, but it affects people of many hues and pigmentation of skin. And so we wanted to, just to verify today and to give out this information to the public that it's not just a black disease. And we would like to have all facets of the community to help us in fighting it. It affects millions of people throughout the world, and it's particularly a common, most common among those ancestors that come from Africa, also from Spanish-speaking regions in the Western Hemisphere, Saudi Arabia, India, Turkey, Greece, and Italy. So it is a worldwide disease. So our walk on September 15th will be held at the Fourth Street Baptist Church. At the Fourth Street Baptist Church in the parking lot there, the registration starts at 8:00. The walk starts at 9:30. Early registration, you can go online to sicklecellcolumbus.webs, W-E-B-S, dot com, and you can register early for $20. But if you wait till the day of the walk, it goes up $5 to register for that. So, but any donation is acceptable other than the walk to help us, because it is our major fundraiser for the year. We have lots of fun for the kids, clowns, bouncers, and all of those things. Beds, high school beds will be there to help us to celebrate. And this passes the word on, and we hope that Columbus comes out and supports us very much on that day. And we hope to see you again here next year.
Great. Well, thank you so much for what you all do. You're here every year. We appreciate it, and we're making a big difference. There's been big strides in sickle cell research, so you make a difference. Come on around and let us shake your hand. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. You're just wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. All right. For our final proclamation of the evening, then we'll switch over to the resolution session. We've got diaper need awareness week, and we're going to ask Lauren Smith, Jessica Drake, and Stephanie Hallfield with the Junior League to come forward.
Hello, ladies. Good evening.
Hi.
And I have the privilege of reading this proclamation in the absence of our Mayor Pro Tim Evelyn Pugh. And it reads, whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry, can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families. And whereas national surveys report that one in three mothers experience diaper need at some time while their children are less than three years of age. And whereas 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend their supply. And whereas the average infant or toddler requires an average of at least 50 diapers changes per week over three years. And whereas there are no government assistance programs for the purchase or provision of diapers, a monthly supply of diapers can cost as much as 6% of a full-time minimum wage worker's salary. Therefore, obtaining a sufficient supply of diapers can cause economic hardship to families. And whereas a supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for infant and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs. And whereas the people of Columbus recognize that addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the state's low-income families and can lead to improved health for families and their communities. And whereas Columbus is proud to be home to the Junior League of Columbus, an official diaper bank registered through the National Diaper Bank Network. Junior League of Columbus is an organization that recognizes the importance of diapers in helping provide economic stability for families and distribute diapers to poor families through various channels. And whereas in Columbus, Georgia, citizens are encouraged to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and those organizations that distribute diapers to families in need to help alleviate the diaper need in Columbus, Georgia. Now therefore, I, Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim September 23rd through September 29th, 2018, as diaper need awareness week. Thank you so much.
Please tell us about this good cause.
I will do that. My name is Jessica Drake, and I'm the Vice President of Communication for the Junior League of Columbus. And we will use this week to raise awareness that one in three mothers struggle with diaper need. It is something that has a profound and complex impact on families, including health risks for children and emotional challenges for both parents and children. Three years ago, we started a collection of diapers in the community, and that has turned into the only national diaper bank in our surrounding areas. Individuals in need can receive donations through local agencies who help distribute the diapers that we collect. And I have with us also our President Lauren Smith, who can tell you about that collection.
Hi. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm proud to announce we've distributed over 80,000 diapers in the last three years, and we'll continue to partner with local nonprofits to help distribute these. We truly appreciate the generosity of the citizens of Columbus to our diaper bank. For more information, we're at JL Columbus dot com, but thank you.
Thank you all so much. Let's recognize them again, folks, and please come on around and let us give you this proclamation. Thank you all so much. Making a huge difference. Thank you. Appreciate you. All right. And now we switch over to the resolutions. This is where the entire council actually votes to commend those who are doing extraordinary work. We want to call forward Columbus Tech, their President Lorette Hoover is here, for a very exciting program, experiencing exciting opportunities internationally. And we're going to have those recognized by Counselor Allen.
Garrett.
Oh, excuse me.
Garrett.
I got it wrong. It's going to be Counselor Walker Garrett. Are you on?
I'm on.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Well, I'm looking forward to tasting some of the delicious recipes y'all learned, because I know y'all have that tasting menu that's a fundraiser for the program, and I'm looking forward to going to it this year. It's my pleasure to read this resolution and in the record, well, we'll have to vote on it, but. Whereas 14 culinary arts students from Columbus Technical College embarked on a special 10-day tour to Germany designed to expand their knowledge of the country's food and culture. Whereas the students were accompanied by Chef Martin Wolf, the program's lead instructor, Chef Tracy Flynn, and Lorette Hoover, President of Columbus Technical College. Whereas the students visited various German communities and participated in hands-on learning apprenticeships with Michelin star chefs, leaders in the restaurant hospitality industries, a commercial kitchen, large caterer, local butchers, and bakers. Whereas funds for the trip were raised by various community events, including Columbus Tech's Culinary Expedition in March of this year. Whereas the students returned with real-life experiences and a better understanding and appreciation of their chosen profession and future career. Whereas the accomplishments of Tamika Colbert, or Colbert, who's actually in our clerk's office, too. Tessiana Goodgame, Shalia Hartwell, Kenneth Hill. Y'all raise your hand when I call your name. Donald Howsey, Jalen Hubbard, Denise Johnson, Christina Marshall, Rikira Rhodes, Johnny Simmons Jr., Latika Smith Downs, Nikki Wilson, Danielle West, Alexis Whitfield, Chef Martin Wolf, Chef Tracy Flynn, and Lorette Hoover are worthy of special recognition by this council. Now therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, I'll call that this be moved for adoption of this resolution.
Okay. Is it second? All right. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All right. It is passed. Congratulations. Who would like to do the speech of fire?
It was a wonderful opportunity for our students. I want to deeply thank Lorette, our president, and our foundation, who financially made this possible, and Lorette, who, with her family in Germany, really showed us what life was like there. It was really a remarkable experience. Some of our students had never been on a plane before. Some of our students, you know, had never been outside of Georgia before. And for the, you know, for their cool air profession, it really, really, really showed them, you know, what they're going to be doing and what it's like, what the opportunities are out there. So, you know, really amazing thanks for the people who made this possible.
Wow. Amazing. Lorette?
And of course, I have to join in on some shameless promotion of our culinary arts program. Don't they look fantastic?
Yes.
And that's what we were told everywhere we went. They didn't just look professional, but they behaved in a very professional manner. In many of the apprenticeships that we went to, like the baker and the butcher, they assumed the product we would make that day would be just a lesson and that it wouldn't be for sale, but very quickly, they realized we're productive and hardworking, and I was just so proud to even be around them. I did receive a notice from Herr Hefele, the butcher, who wants to know who's going to be the summer apprentice, so that's, I know, we got a couple. And I also got an email from Herr Lutz, the baker, who wants to know who's going to come and do it. I know, that's what you want. So we're going to have to compete for those two apprenticeships, but it's going to be awesome. And then shameless promotion, March again of this year, I'll let you all know when the date gets closer. We're going to have the most fantastic German meal you've ever seen on this side of the United States, and it will be done by these students. But I'm thankful that you promoted our foundation, but these students actually raised their own funds to go to Germany. It was a line item in the foundation. They raised $58,000 worth of catering in our community, and...
I'm going to the German dinner.
Yes.
To plan next year's trip. And next year, we're going to Ireland again, yes. So every summer, we'll be somewhere with the program. It's a great experience.
Where are you going next summer?
Ireland.
Wow.
Yeah. They have a food science program that is the best in the world, so going there for food science is real important to the training program. And then the year after, we think we're going to France. So Ireland and then France. So we're excited.
All right. Well, fantastic. Let's give them a round of applause, folks. Come on by. Congratulations. Oh, what great work. Congratulations. So proud. Yeah, we're so proud of you guys. Congratulations. Yeah. Oh, great job. Always proud of you. Yeah. All right. Oh, sure, sure. Congratulations. Congratulations. All right, let's turn around and get a picture real quick. Hold this up.
Hold this way. I can't switch it. Tell us what to do.
All right. Kind of scooch in.
Got it.
Okay.
Got it.
Thank you.
Great. All right. There you go. I can't remember where I left off, but yeah, there we go. All right. Congratulations. Thank you. You bet. There you go. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. All right. Last but not least, to our most patient members of our audience, we are thrilled to have Andrew College volleyball team here with members of their administration. We're going to ask you all to come forward, as you've been watching all night. Now you're experts in how to do this. Andrew College is such a special institution here in southwest Georgia. We're going to get to hear a little bit about it and meet some amazing young women setting the bar of excellence. Yeah. There you go. Yeah, we've got an Andrew College alumna in the audience, so hello there. All right, right. And we're going to have Counselor Gary Allen read this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. I was called on by a friend to publish this, and I got to thinking about, you know, we've all, we all read about heroic acts, and we've even watched actors portray them out in movies and shows. And as children, we even, growing up, we always dreamed about being the hero or the heroine. But you never know what's going to happen until you're put in that situation. And I would like to let you know that Andrew College volleyball team answered the call. So I'm going to let you know what they did and introduce you at the same time, and then I hope we can hear some personal stories. The resolution reads as follows, and by the way, ladies, this will put you forever in the archives of Columbus, Georgia, so you're making history. Whereas the Andrew College volleyball team played a vital role in the rescue of trapped and injured people at the scene of a multi-vehicle accident in Columbus, Georgia. Whereas the team was traveling south on I-185 the evening of August 22nd, 2018, when a car came across the median and hit the minivan traveling in front of them. Whereas assistant baseball coach Trevor Ren was driving and pulled over immediately to assist them as members of the volleyball team called 911. Whereas the volleyball coach, Donna Roundtree, ran to help a woman trapped in a car as smoke was pouring up from the floorboard, and the front of the car burst into flames as she struggled to open the doors. Calling for help, she received the assistance of a motorist who was able to help get the trapped driver out of it and take her to safety by the Andrew College van. Whereas at the same time, Coach Trevor Ren was also with, was also involved with getting three injured women out of the minivan. Whereas first responders arrived on the scene, and the volleyball players helped them care for the injured woman in the car. At least two more vehicles were involved in the pileup as the Andrew College team assisted with the rescue. Whereas the heroic efforts of the Andrew College volleyball team and coaches are worthy of special recognition by this council. Now therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, we hereby commend the following members of the Andrew College volleyball team and their coaches for heroic efforts on August 22nd, 2018. When I call your name, raise your hand, and I hope I get your names correct, so forgive me if I mess it up. Taylor Barnes, Marius Guzman, Oriana Bauta, is that close enough? Hindia Roper, Kennedy Jackson, Ellie Wertham, Shakira Seibert, Brianna O'Sheal, manager, DeShanvia Johnson, manager, Coach Donna Roundtree, and assistant baseball coach Trevor Ren. Let a copy of this resolution be forwarded to Andrew College volleyball team and... DeShanvia Johnson, manager, Coach Donna Roundtree, and assistant baseball coach Trevor Ren. Let a copy of this resolution be forwarded to Andrew College volleyball team and coaches. Mayor, I move the adoption.
Is there a second? A second? All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
It is approved. Let's give them a round of applause. What an amazing story of heroism. Please, yes, introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about this.
Well, good evening. My name is Lynda Buchanan, and I'm the very, very proud president of Andrew College, and delighted to be here tonight with this fine, fine group of students of ours and coaches. Trevor Ren, our assistant baseball coach, he really took the first physical action. I think at humble cold feet tonight. And this, they all have been somewhat traumatized by this, so I so appreciate this gesture of recognition for them, and I think it will help them kind of process it and heal, along with me, as well as one of our Board of Trustees, Mr. Gene Kemp, who is a resident of Columbus, as are two of our players. Hold your hands up.
Columbus residents?
Columbus, from Columbus. There you go, okay. Servant leadership is a concept that is not at all foreign to Columbus, and nor is it foreign to us at Andrew College, an hour south in Cuthbert, Georgia. And part of that reason is because we share the generosity of the Bradley Turner Foundation, and specifically, Mr. Bill Turner, who we all lost, as you know, a year, year and a half ago. We have a wonderful Andrew serves program, thanks to Mr. Turner and the Bradley Turner Foundation, but as president of a college, the college, Andrew College, I can't really know if that ethos completely permeates the culture of the college. Well, now I know that it does, because it would have been very easy and very understandable, traveling late at night, south on 185, to get home after a volleyball match, to have just made their way past the accident. It would have ensured their safety. I would not have blamed the driver, Trevor, at all, but they didn't. A horrific accident happened. They knew they needed to help. They stopped, they acted. That is servant leadership. They were moved to act, they were called to act, and they did. So, we thank you so much for this recognition. We know it's been a long evening for you. We don't mind it all waiting to the end, because I think it has given us an opportunity to, to see how else your community functions in a spirit of community, leadership, and service. I think it's wonderful for my students to witness that and as they're recognized for being part of that. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. It's great to see our neighbors from Andrew College. Andrew College has a very special relationship with Columbus. As you said, it's in Cuthbert, so it's very close by. Thank you, ladies, for all you do, and thank you all. Come on around, let's give them another round of applause, folks. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you for your efforts. We really appreciate all you do. Congratulations. Thank you so much for your heroism. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you so much. Oh, congratulations. Yes, oh, yes. What's that name?
I can get that from you.
Yes, anybody can get it from you. Yes, yes.
Andrew College.
I'm sorry, it was, yes, all right, here we go, absolutely.
So, when we take this photo, can we do a quick commercial?
Yeah.
I mean, we're the Andrew College volleyball team. You're watching CCG TV.
All right, you got it?
Sure.
Or maybe the captains can say it in unison, and then we'll do the one, two, three.
Okay. One more, please. Thank you all.
So, before we move, before we move.
Okay.
If we do all three, what do you want to say?
We're the Andrew College volleyball team.
We're the Andrew College volleyball team. You're watching CCG TV.
Okay. All right, we'll give it a try. Take one.
On three. He's got the camera rolling. One, two, three.
We're the Andrew College volleyball team. We're watching CCG TV.
One more. Let's do one more.
Just for good measure.
Okay, you got it? But we've got to, we've got to say it louder.
Yeah, I thought it was good. All right, here we go.
Three, one, two, three.
We're the Andrew College volleyball team, and you're watching CCG TV.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate you sitting through. Oh, Trevor, I think I forgot. Oh, yeah, aren't they just fantastic?
Great representation of our...
Oh, my goodness, yes. Thank you so much. You bet.
Thank you. All the best to you.
Yeah. All right, and the, oh, excuse me, for the volleyball team, I forgot your proclamations. There you go. There's one for everybody there. All right, and to close out our agenda today, we want to express appreciation for those who serve on our board. We have dozens of boards, commissions, and authorities, and so tonight, we express appreciation to Janet Crane for her meritorious service on the Commission on International Relations and Cultural Liaison Encounters, and also express appreciation to Mr. Ken Henson Jr. for his meritorious service on the Housing Authority of Columbus, Georgia. And so, if I could get a motion for those? In a sec, all those in favor, please state aye. All right, we'll make sure those get forwarded to Mr. Henson and to Ms. Crane, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, all those in favor, please state aye. All right, we're adjourned. See you next week.